Lindsay joining in yet?
Well, thank you, Roger, for all your service.
Okay.
Yes?
You're welcome, Mary.
I'll leave it over to you.
All right. You can hit the record button.
It's recording.
It's 6:31. We'll call a meeting to order Ashburn Hand Planning Board People 21st, 2021. We will. Everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Read the usual notifications. Orders and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, with the exception of public carings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours prior to meeting. Votes may be taken. Documents submitted for review can be found under the planning board tab on the town website. Meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and actions taken. This is a remote meeting. Please keep your microphones on mute unless you've been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait till you are recognized by the chairman to speak. This is a remote meeting. Those appearing before the board shall be prepared to share their screen to present materials for discussion. Can I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
A motion will prove it.
Thank you, Larry. Give a second. Richard? We can't hear you. Now I can hear you. So you can second that?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor? The agenda as presented, a roll call vote, and we'll also do this as a attendance. So Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Richard Wright? That's a yes. Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Rocha Hoyt, yes. Lindsay Butler has not joined us yet. Chairman comments. Let's see. My last meeting, elections next week. Let's see what else has gone on. There's the MVP presentation online. I think Thursday at 5:00. Summary of the discussions from the the two online meetings last month or so. I think that is about it. There's no MRP meeting this month. We had two in March. We can continue on. Don't know if the A and R applicant is going to join us tonight. Haven't heard anything from them.
Applicant for who is joining us tonight?
The one for the A and R for Bluefield, Far Hills, but I don't know if they are. And off we've hadn't had any correspondence with them. We have back forth emails between Time Bond and Green Ventures to get the LID review underway. So if we don't have anyone for open discussion yet, we can just move on down the agenda. Other new business. Haven't had anything come in. I think things are quiet, at least until lumber prices go down and people start building a little faster. Whole business subdivision updates. We haven't heard anything from from Edinburgh Avenue. Nothing further with Lily Road. As far as change of use for Main Street, I think the building commissioner was reviewing things for them as far as potential change of use. But nothing's come to us yet. DLTA, we got the letter for round three letter approval recommendation or support from board dislockment. So I sent that in yesterday for the zoning map update. So we should hear about that first week of May. Nothing further on the housing chapters that with MRPC. Could reach out to Karen again in May to get that one to where that one is on schedule.
Are you talking about the bylaw amendment now?
That's the next one here. Yeah, number seven, the bylaw amendment.
You're talking about the DLT?
The DLTA one, the other, the housing. Housing chapter, the master plan. Refocused on that and maybe next month get MRPC into an update and do set a schedule for that. As far as the bylaw amendments, we got we had the hearing last week. We didn't get any public comments. Marshall has, I think, edited the paragraph that he wanted to edit as far as subsurface storm drainage. So the outstanding item on that is just piecing together the zoning map. Deciding whether it's the LIB or the RB and really the uses allowed are quite different between those two. So can take a little thought to figure out what that should be. So once, at this point, if that's the only issue and the text is ready, we can I suggested before to town council and at least get her review and get it wrapped up and then can be put aside until the fall. As far as other bylaw amendments, I house numbering is one. There's one issue there we need to look at. Potentially to clarify it's further on in the agenda, but the house numbers, we don't really have a way to address the accessory dwelling units and I've talked to Debbie about it and her suggestion was to reach out to the fire chief to see, to get some of their input. You know, we have 40 foot rule. We have like a multifamily building will get letters for each unit. But how to address an accessory dwelling unit? Putting town hearing decisions. We haven't gotten any mail since last week. Did for the correspondence we got from Karen about another grant with assist with land use planning. Other town boards and committees. I met brief meeting last week with the capital planning, joint meeting with capital planning and the advisory board. We get another meeting on Monday in advance of the town meeting. At least for capital plan, it's just one piece of equipment. I think it's either year three or four of the purchase agreement for that. But that's the only item on the capital plan for this year.
So what's, what's your agenda? What?
I'm trying. All that, oh, just did that. The capital planning committee met with joint meeting with the advisory board and Brian to discuss the warrant articles. And that will meet again then on Monday. Again, we're, I'm the representative for the capital planning committee and the only item that they had for this year's was to purchase a year three of a purchase agreement for I'm not remember the specific piece of equipment, but it's for TPW. And I think that is it for me. If Walt, if you've got anything to update us on?
Bylaw committee is continuing. Meeting every week on Thursday nights. It's, you know, pretty intense. They've decided to go with Ecode, which is there's a couple of competitive companies that do essentially online bylaws organize towns around that have done it or Townsend and Orwell and, and there's a whole slew of them have done it and it's pretty impressive what they can do. The big thing is, is they'll be coming in and they will be sort of organizing them in a way that we can then systemically go through them and add our comments and make our changes in the organization of how they have had success doing it. And there are lots of articles that are in our bylaws that are all over the place in different sections and they should be sort of grouped together. Short of getting into the detail, which right now I wouldn't be very good at explaining. That's what Ecode will do. Where we don't know. I don't know if they're going to start this week or next week. The second thing that the bylaw review committee is going is we as a group are taking several sections at a time, chapters at a time and going through and then having a conversation about that chapter and whether we think there's issues, whether, whether we think it's fine as is. What are questions that we want to ask Ecode about it? And we're only I think we're, this week will be at like chapter 15 of the general bylaws. We pretty much keep the meetings to a to an hour. Pretty bills good that way. So the meetings are pretty efficient and we and it's been a learning experience and I'd say relatively you know, successful, although it is kind of overwhelming at times because of all the bylaws we have in different places. On the other committee, the MRT committee, marijuana review team. We have not met since our last meeting and I have nothing new to report there.
Any new parties interested in town?
No, not, not that I've know of. Basically, we're looking at Eddie's Flowers up at the corner of 119 and 101. We're looking at Green Ventures, which is, I guess I always the name of the road escapes me on that one. And then, of course, we have Evokana. But you know, those are, those are them and it's a long, arduous process to get them through the state. So right now they're working with the select board to get a community host agreement signed off on. And then they have to go to the state and they probably won't be coming back to us for another six months because of the state's bureaucracy. So it's a little frustrating, I think. Well, I have no personal interest in, in marijuana or cannabis project products. They are legal and it's kind of frustrating to see these people who are trying to start a business and they're being held up trying to start the business. So so you know, that, you know, I empathize with their, with their challenging situation.
Just ties up a lot of money on there and
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Cause that's all money that they don't have anything coming in.
And they've got to secure property.
Yeah.
But without knowing if they're going to go be able to go ahead.
Yeah. It's going to be I think the biggest one, I think the other two are rather nondescript. Nobody's going to release Green Ventures or Evokana. You know, they're gonna nobody's, most people aren't even know what it is or what they're doing. It's the Eddie's Flowers up at 119 that is a combination of manufacturing, cultivation and retail sales. And they're going to do quite a major multi hundred thousand dollar renovation to that property to to prepare, you know, their operation and get them going. I have nothing else to remember.
Okay. Larry with Complete Streets is, you guys met at all or?
No.
Oh. I think they're going ahead with a, with a plan, but nothing with that.
I haven't seen any emails.
Yeah.
Having a meeting.
Yeah, they haven't. And Richard Economic Development, did they have a meeting?
Yeah, they met last night and they were talking about the sidewalks and they talked about complete streets and that type of stuff and business adventures. They were talking about the church changing overhands to another business and stuff like that, but nothing really that's not been talked about already. I mean, there's a new sidewalk over on cushion side of the road going up the hill. About there in the line. So they could put it street poles in later. I mean, the light poles and you know, we discussed the sidewalks and you know, I throw my two cents out there about the Brothers Pizza. I mean, that's one of our main intersections and we have no sidewalks. So that there doubt out there to, to get something that they'd be addressed if they want a walkability town.
Very definitely. I agree with you.
I mean, I mean, there's a lot of places we could relocate him to and make that safer. That's, that's one of the worst intersections we got.
Just restricted on all sides and then having a parking entrance in and out just doesn't
When I rebuilt, you know, that was one of the big restrictions for me is that I couldn't use the back out parking anymore. And I had to put a sidewalk in and a sidewalk goes nowhere. Same thing down on, on Center Street. I had to put one in for the restaurant and it goes nowhere. I'm building sidewalks to nowhere.
Good to start somewhere though, you know, it's
No, it's costing me money and it's aggravating.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And then, and then after you do it, several years later, DPW comes and plows them over. Doesn't
And then they don't want to take care of it because I put a fence up, but they didn't tell me I couldn't put a fence up. And it's just like, I get beat on all kinds of different directions, that sidewalk. So I finally just told them, I'm not going to plow it. If you guys don't plow it and take care of the sidewalk, I'm not going to because it goes nowhere. So they've been taking care of it lately.
Yeah. Now.
That's all, that's all that's going on with them. You know, it's just one of those things that I think that's one of the major things that they're going to have to address if they want a walkability downtown.
Right. I think we now have the parties involved for the A and R. Are you folks ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so I will excuse myself and join back in when you're finished. It's, let the minute say 5:51 that I accuse myself from the discussion.
Have they been welcomed in?
Okay, I'll stop sharing my screen. And see if I can stop my video and
Roger, do we have a quorum with three of us?
Yes, yes, for an A and R, yes.
Hello, is this Gail Dorian? Are you there? You have to unmute your microphone.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just listening.
Okay, are you, are you representing the you know, representing Far Hills, Blue Hill Road, 4662 continuation A and R?
I'm, I'm just listening. I thought this was a public meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'm just listening.
You're not here for the A and R for Far Hills. We thought we were going in. We thought that the people had arrived with regards to the Far Hills, Blue, Bluefield Road 46 to 62 continuation. I, Roger, I don't think the people are here. So would you please unrecuse yourself and let's move on? Roger? Roger?
I don't know if he went, I don't know if he walked away. I just sent him a chat to come on back.
Thank you. It's not 6:15 anyway. It's the open discussion is supposed to be
7:00. Oh, okay, well.
Do you have anything in the open discussion and public comment that you'd like to talk about?
I don't, I have nothing.
Yep, I'm talking, Gail.
Oh, okay.
See if Gail.
No, if they're the only ones and you can
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just listening. I just want to listen, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So we want to move on with the agenda then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
For Fire Hills.
Of course, they're not, the, the agenda has it at 7:15. So they a little bit.
Oh, okay. All right, that's fine. We'll just continue on then. See what we got here. Correspondence, we didn't have any other committees. Do you want to review the minutes?
Fine. Do you want to listen to do you want me to pull them up?
Yeah, that would be good. Let me stop my share and make sure that you can should be able to.
All right, let me give me a moment. Okay. I, I sent these out this afternoon. Comments that they want to bring?
I had one comment just on a whether it was auto correct or something. We can just go down, was a little further down.
Here's one here. Steve calls, well, asked.
Yeah. Let's see. I said it was spelled correctly, but it was just the wrong word. It was further up.
Can you remember what section was in?
No. Probably a third of the way down, but
Well, we can probably, we can approve.
Yeah.
And amended afterwards if there's
Yeah.
Something substantial.
No.
Okay, does anybody want to have a motion to approve?
Maybe it was somewhere in the cause well.
Yeah, this is the biggest part of the discussion.
Yeah, there was just one word in there, but
A motion to approve them.
Yeah.
Unless we can find the amendment. It's, it's a lot of work. Well, thank you very much for doing that.
That was one of those prickly meetings.
Yeah, okay, we'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sorry, he's made it.
Okay, I'll second that. Roll call vote. Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Richard Wright? Richard? Unmute yourself, Richard.
You're on delay, Richard.
I don't know what's going on here.
We're approving the minutes or
Better, you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. I don't know what the deal is. I don't, I'm not muting myself.
Oh. We're voting on the minutes, so
Voted on them.
Yep, he said yes.
All right, so. All right, so, uh, Roger Hoyt, yes, so your motion carries subsequent to any, uh, finding the erroneous word.
I'll, I'll read it through one more time.
Yeah.
And then, and then I'll send you a PDF.
Okay.
Final version and, uh.
Yeah.
We'll, uh.
And, uh.
We'll get these posted.
All right, and.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Okay. Yeah, come back to our agenda here. Administrative matters, I guess we can say, um. I've. Posted. Things for the agenda for May twelfth, so, uh. You can, who, I guess it's Richard until you have a new chairman, um.
I would assume the first day, the first day as the vice chair, Richard, we would then, we would then, um. One of the first agenda items would be board organization.
Yes, and so if during the week, anything. To add, Heather can update the agenda.
Okay.
I may have to update it because I won't be here on the eleventh. I'm flying to North Carolina on that day.
But Richard, it's a Zoom meeting.
I know, but I'm flying that day. And I don't think they let me do a Zoom meeting on the airplane.
It's the twelfth, I think that.
Believe it or not, Richard, I did once.
Yeah, okay, um, well then, uh. Let's see, um. Next meeting.
And, and that's, that's another thing we get to talk about is if you find somebody that wants to take over for me a year in advance, that would be fine because I'm going to be doing a lot of traveling. If we stay Zoom, that's not a problem, but if we don't stay Zoom, it will be a problem.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm flying out on the, the, uh. On a Tuesday, the meeting's on a Wednesday. That would be the twelfth.
Yeah, yeah, May twelfth.
Be available for that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, I fly on a Tuesday. You said the eleventh, that's a Tuesday.
I mean, the other May twelfth, yeah.
It's twelfth, okay.
Because you know what happens? You know what happens when they reorganize the board and you're not present?
Yeah.
You know what happens if, if they vote on reorganizing the board and you're not present at the meeting?
Yeah, but if you're never present for the meeting, you can't be the chair.
No, you, you get to write the minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay. So I gotta get the recording to write the minutes.
It's, yeah, yeah, no, if you, well, um. I guess we just need to know if you're going to have enough people. The quorum for the meeting, um.
I, I could make the meeting on the twelfth because I could do it from down there.
All right, so just, uh.
Is, is the twelfth a Wednesday?
Yes.
So that should.
The eleventh, I fly out on the eleventh, which is a Tuesday, so I'll, I'll be available on the eleventh.
Yeah, I mean, the twelfth, so, um. Mary will add the Zoom information and Heather can update the agenda. I don't see that there's any new things yet.
Yeah.
So, um, back to house numbers. Let's see, we got, I think seventeen Wag Hill Road. To record in the minutes, um, we've had a discussion with the applicant on, um. Three oh one Ridge Turnpike, it was, um, new construction. It was built as a, uh. Essentially a accessory drawing unit, but he cut his ZBA, they proved it as a special permit for a two-family, but it's a. A house with an attached garage and an apartment over the garage and he needs a house number. Being an existing building on the site previously, it's already assigned three oh one, um, just trying to figure out how we can, um. Assign it. And be in compliance with the bylaw, but make something practical. So the last discussion I had with Debbie was. Keep it as three oh one, make the accessory, um, either a three oh one A or three oh one R for right or something. She suggested talking with the fire chief. To see if they had input because it's all related to nine one one anyway, and, uh, what makes sense to them. Uh, the issue is kind of how do you deal with some of these other accessory units, um. Either attached to the main structure or, you know, like on the Don Hey Road, it's a. Apartment over a garage and that one, you know, happens to be across the street from the house. You know, along with your septic, so, um, I'm going to suggest that the house is thirty-three. Uh, the garage with the apartment above it across the street should be thirty-four. That's not an issue. But. That's where we're going. It could be for that one on Ridge Turnpike, three oh one and three oh one with a letter. The adjacent property is already three oh three, so, you know, that's not an option. And there was one more, but, uh, she didn't have the right. Matching street and parcel number to go by, so, um. Once that's figured out to be another house number to assign.
So what, what's our follow-up on this?
A follow-up on that is, uh, we're just waiting for the discussion with the fire chief, any recommendation he would have on, uh.
Are you going to have that conversation?
I will follow up with it, yeah, and if, if it haven't heard by, uh. Tuesday, then I'll. You know, let Heather. To the, uh, email.
Okay.
Correspondence, um. If I find what I put out previously for the associate member. I'll send that to Heather to get posted. For that vacancy. Um. And. I don't have anything. I think we've. I don't know if, uh. Gail is ready for the A and R?
I don't think.
Oh, she's not here for the A and R.
Oh, she's not. She's just listening into us, okay.
Listening for the open public.
Hearing.
Oh.
This is not a very exciting meeting.
No, it is not a very, well, that's okay. I don't want any big issues lingering.
Well, so. I guess the only thing that we have to do is wait seven more minutes because we put seven fifteen.
Yeah.
In the, if the A and R shows up in the next seven.
Roger, I have a, I have a question on the, the housing numbers and whatnot for a multi-building or dwellings or whatnot. Like twenty-seven Maine, I discussed this with the old fire chief and he didn't really get back to me, but twenty-seven Maine. When you pull into it, the apartment that goes upstairs, which my opinion should be apartment one, that's the first door. That's apartment two, apartment one's in the middle and apartment three's in the rear. So it's really weird. I, I think it will be very confusing to somebody that's new on an ambulance or anything else, where to go.
Yep, and.
I saw the building. I just want to say that there's a, and I'm sure that's not the only house in town that's got something really weird like that.
Yeah, because according to what the numbering system is, that should be, um.
Door should be one and two, three to the rear.
Oh, it should be. As you, and of course with doors on different sides or whatever, it should be letters, so it should be A, B, C.
This one's one, two, three, but one's in the middle, two's in the front and three's in the rear.
Yeah, so other places it would be like A, B and rear, sometimes if, if it's. At least that's what David.
Bring up to him again because he's a new guy. I don't own the building anymore, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, or if you've got two buildings on one lot, you know, are they, in some cases, they're, you know. Consecutive numbers. But in this other case we had, we, you know. There's already.
You get called out of address and you're new and then go to apartment one, he's going to want to go to the first door. It's not numbered.
Especially if they're just out of order, yeah.
It's out of order big time.
Yeah, um. But as we have a few accessories and it just wasn't addressed that, uh. How to do that.
But my head.
All right, um. We don't have anything more, um. So Walt, you've got the list of. Bylaw issues I had given you.
Yep.
Sarah had her. List of concerns, so.
We haven't really gotten to the zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
We've shelved, shelved that for now. Um, so we're still on general bylaws now.
Yeah.
And we're going to stop it, um, right before construction because we want Sarah at the meeting when we talk about the construction.
Construction.
Uh, there's, uh, in the general bylaws, there's a, a chapter called construction.
Okay. A, as far as these, uh, house numbers, belabor that point, but they should be assigned. You know, at the time of the A and R, or time of the lot, or, or before, is any permitting going on? Just so that it's clear that, uh, you know, what property they're referring to. You've got something like Bray Avenue, which has low number seven, nine, eleven, and there's lot nine, but it's actually seven. The address is seven Bray Avenue, just. Causes confusion and difficulty with anybody doing the paperwork. But, uh. And especially, you know, as Heather said, every. Everybody has a lot one. So, at least when we do an accessory dwelling unit, special permit or something, just make sure we get the number assigned. It is the, uh, property owner's obligation to have the correct number.
Okay.
And there's a big fine involved too, if you read the enforcement part of it.
The one thing that I've learned about the bylaws is there's a lot of enforcement issues in town that are just not done. Not forced, so, um, you know, that's going to be a key part of the conversation about. The operation when, when the new bylaws are ready to go into. Or be put out there, and I imagine they'll be put out there in stages because. They'll be, you know, most of them are probably not controversial at all.
Hmm.
There's, you know, a handful that, you know, may be perceived or thought to be controversial. Uh, and so there's a little sales. You know, we may have to do a little, um, education. To the community as to why this bylaw is problematic. But right now, we are a long way from all.
Way from, yeah, yeah.
We are, we are, we are months away from having, you know. Having potentially, uh. Tough conversations. One more minute.
Just, uh. It was one meeting we waited over an hour for Brian Zuck, so. It's a few years ago.
I'd like to know from Gail how stimulating this meeting's been to her.
Yeah, I'm rarely leaving on a high note, aren't I?
Gail's probably fallen asleep.
Sleep.
Uh, it's seven fifteen.
See, I'll, I'll yell.
So I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. You hear me?
Yes.
I, I hear you.
Okay, I'll second it. Let's go.
You guys jumped on top of that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to, uh. Uh, do a roll call vote, uh, to adjourn the meeting as, uh. The other party has not attended, um. Larry Boudreaux.
Yes.
Richard Wright.
Yeah.
Walt Meisner.
Yes.
Okay, and Roger Hoyt, yes, um.
And Roger, we want to thank you for, oh, five years and I, I, I don't understand half of this stuff, so.
I'm with you, Walt.
We're learning a lot and, uh.
To tell you the truth, I'm still learning every time I. Come up with something, you know, kind of new matter comes to us or something, I read the book, it, you, you learn more, but, uh. Attend those, uh, training sessions.
Are you going to be our alternate or?
The associate?
Yeah, associate, I'm sorry.
If we recommend it, will you?
The, uh, the letter is written. I haven't been sent it to you yet because we haven't advertised the opening yet, um. That's just the question of whether you want, uh. Past member or you want to start grooming a new member?
Well, the problem is, is, and, and I think you know this, Roger, there is so much to learn. And the associate member is always coming in when we need a quorum or when we have, you know.
Well.
For in case, and unless the person has some background. How can they learn, you know, we, um, I mean, it's, it's hard enough to learn as somebody, a member who's coming every single, uh, every other week. Uh, let alone to, to learn as an associate member. When you've, you know, never been to a meeting before or very been to the review, so. I mean, I would opt for, um, having someone who has experience and it's basically you and Skip are the only two.
Yeah.
Who, um. Who have that back experience.
So. Yeah, you know, the associate is only there for special permits.
Yeah.
To participate or vote or whatever, if you have a. Quorum issue, so, um. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been a grueling last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to, you know. I think, yeah, we, we, we need to find. Some sort of standard way in which we're going to. You know, approach each meeting. I, I, I've come to the conclusion that we've got to take the times off of the open discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Well. The A and R is because. You know, if you want to say something, they need to show up at the beginning of the meeting and we need to.
Yeah, it's just, that's what's written in the planning board procedural rules. With those times and that order of things and, um, not that you have to follow it, but that's what's.
Things around and I think, I think that's what I would suggest to, like, to the others on the board.
You know, it just takes a, a vote of the board at a meeting to change those procedural rules, so if you want to do that.
Yeah, the hardest thing is about taking minutes for this is when we're jumping around on the agenda. It makes the minutes really hard because I literally take the agenda and I put it in my, my one note. In order to follow it down, but then we're jumping around and you're. You know, you're trying to jump around and find, you know, find each section, so. You know, that will be a second recommendation will be that, you know, we.